Five, they got the wood oven and kids can pull up a chair and stand and look over there for a thing and watch the.
All right. Six o'clock, Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council Roll Call. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. In the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Roll call.
Season series.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes. Yes.
Presentation from the MPO.
Council Chris Shires with Confluence five two five seven street, Des Moines, Iowa. Here on behalf of Des Moines area MPO with a very brief presentation of where we're at. With our comprehensive safety action plan for the member of the MPO membership. So next slide. Just one thing to acknowledge, we were lucky enough to be recipients of a Safe Streets grant. To do this comprehensive analysis, one of many identified through on math. And just kind of reminder that the MPO District Membership and Boundary, we sell a lot of members of the metro cities. Portions or all four counties. So the MPO is coordinating funding for this grant as well as studying itself. And then specifically, I was acting on the MPO's. Next slide, we've had a little bit of line here. So getting on with Confluence. And we're assisting with the public engagement and outreach component of this, but we're part of a much larger consultant team. That is collectively working on this plan for you and the rest of the MPO members. And so why are we doing this? Well, the purpose is to how how can we on our streets make them significantly safer? Reduce those serious fatal, uh, serious injuries and those fatalities. Excellent. Uh, so what is a comprehensive safety action plan? Uh, it's comes out of our infrastructure funding grants from the federal government. And really, it's all focused on how do we make our streets safer? What are those things that we can do to improve all of our lives, specifically in the metro? So we look at those factors of crash. And so where are our fresh risks? What are our high injury networks? Meaning where are those areas that we're having the most occurrences of fatalities or serious injury crashes? What are those countermeasures? What do we make of roads safer? Our sidewalks and trails are plus safer. And then ultimately, we want to give the number of teams and beats our recommendation of strategies that we can collectively take. Uh, to make our streets safer and specific improvements that can be made, uh, for which we can seek grant follow. So now at the end of all this, we'll be asking each community to provide a resolution of support. Uh, so that we can show that we have this consistent metro line project. Next slide, one of those key principles to creating a safe streets for all. First thing is we've got to acknowledge that this amount of death and industry injury is just unacceptable. That we need to make some kind of change that we know as humans, we make mistakes, we're vulnerable. Uh, and we're, we're all responsible for these. Uh, and then safety is important as well as redundancy. And I'll get into that a little bit more in a second. So on the next slide, uh, let's talk about what are those key requirements of any comprehensive safety action plan? There's eight things, uh, there's a leadership commitment and set resolution acceptance I talked about. Uh, we need that structure of how this is set up, that safety analysis, our engagement with the communities. Uh, as well as those considerations of equity, our policy and process changes. And then specific strategies and selection of those projects where we can get the most out of our budget. As well as how to track this and show that progress and transparency of something over time. And so that project goal, this is something that we actually all need to collectively figure out. One, we want to have a hundred percent vision zero, zero, uh, serious injury or traffic deaths. Or some type of significant reduction. And then what's our target here as soon as twenty thirty-five or maybe out to year twenty thirty-five? So these are all things that we need to discuss and come up with that major goal for this effort. On the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about why we need this, why this is important to continue in line of fatalities. This all impacts us and those serious injuries. So one point three million lives lost globally each year. Huge number, but let's look at the U.S. Over forty-two thousand lives lost in twenty twenty-two. And then kind of the most chilling number is our pedestrian fatalities are on the rise dramatically. So twenty percent increase, uh, just in the last couple of years. Going on the next slide.
So those were, I'm sorry, those were those Iowa numbers or U.S. numbers?
Uh, so that the other ones were Iowa numbers. So that is a percentage. But we do see that even our local data that we're, we're seeing an increase in the injuries and fatalities.
Okay.
And bikers. Yeah, great question. And please do interrupt me with questions. I'll go quick, but I'm also happy to slow down if you want this longer presentation. Uh, on this slide, uh, this again is U.S. uh, numbers. But you can see in, you know, we were trending down all the way to year twenty-ten. But here in the last decade plus, uh, we've been trending up significantly in pedestrian fatalities. A lot of factors involved. Uh, obviously, we're on the plus side saying more people get out and walk and bike. But on the negative side, perhaps our mobile devices are getting in our way. On the next slide. Uh, let's talk a little bit about what's going on here in the region and our five-year analysis. Uh, so, um, safety is an issue that's affecting us all. We do have a big problem here. So, uh, we've had a over a hundred and eight or eighteen hundred fatal and serious injury crashes just in ten years. It's a big number for us. So a hundred and fifty-one people in the Des Moines metro, uh, were involved with a fatal or serious injury crash just in the year twenty-twenty. So we're just pulling some data here to show how significant that is. And then on the next slide. When we look at total crashes from just over the last ten, uh, five years that we have full data. Uh, fifty thousand, over fifty thousand total crashes, nine hundred and thirty-nine crashes. Uh, there was a fatality or a serious injury, uh, that we abbreviate that to say SSI. And then, um, uh, of those, uh, serious crashes, a hundred and sixty-eight were fatalities. And then when we look at how those were all broken out, uh, you have two hundred and fifteen motorcycle, uh, fatalities or serious injuries. A hundred and nineteen, uh, pedestrian fatalities or serious injuries. Uh, so really striking to think when, you know, that many crashes, that many motor vehicles involved. But really, those serious injuries or fatalities are so concentrated onto motorcycles, pedestrians, bicycles.
Is there any data like looking, I, I know that Iowa is, um, not, you don't have to wear helmet.
Sure.
Uh, is there data that, because I'm from New York, so New Yorkers, you have to wear helmets. So it was very weird when we moved here to not see motorcyclists with helmets. And, um, my husband rides a motorcycle and doesn't wear a helmet. But, um, are there, can we look and see data? Is there like distinctions between states, uh, that type of thing, that helmet laws, non-helmet laws?
I do not have specific numbers of the impact of having or not having a helmet law. Uh, but that's something we can look into, see if there is the data that kind of shows. Uh, how many, uh, folks were injured that didn't or killed that didn't have a helmet on? Sometimes the data is there, sometimes it has a lot to do with reporting, but we can look into that. It, it certainly can't help not having a helmet requirement. Uh, but you know, we have to work with the laws and they have, but that's a great question. So I don't have that. What are we doing?
Thank you.
Iowa's one of three states that doesn't have a helmet law in the country.
Anything else? All right. So when we look at some of the, uh, significant trends we see with this. Our rural areas have that higher percentage of a serious crash and most of those being you ran off the road. Also, those crashes are happening more on weekends as well as in dark, uh, conditions. Uh, with one-third of the rural fatal or serious injury crashes occurred where it doesn't have that likely. Where it is an unwritten section, uh, single vehicles, uh, where you're not hitting another vehicle. It's just one vehicle having an accident, it's forty-six percent of those. And then, um, crashes involving the courses, motorcyclists and pedestrians, which are very vulnerable users. Have that much higher likelihood, that much higher percentage of being fatal or serious. On the next side, uh, slide there, uh, half of those, um, vulnerable road user crashes. So pedestrians, bikers, bicyclists, uh, occur at intersections. Um, and then it's, uh, of those, it's also when we're entering or crossing the roadway and sixty-five percent of those, uh, serious or potential injuries crashes. Uh, speeding, speeding and failing, uh, to yield were top major causes in the urban area, in our urban areas, not in the rural areas. And maybe not a surprise to many of us, our males have a higher percentage of being involved in our serious injuries and fatalities. And with young drivers involved in twenty-two percent of the time. So on out all that, uh, the building boom of what we're running today, that's why we're here. How can we make this better? What are those things we can do? So on the nice side, looking to the future, uh, we do want to hear from, uh, everyone in the metro. You know, what are your concerns? What are individual community members, uh, areas of concern in our entire metro, specific road sections, uh, crosswalks, crossings? Uh, any specific areas that are concerned with, maybe even areas they actually feel safe, like an improvement we've made that they think was, uh, well done. Uh, and then any other feedback they have. And for that, uh, we do have a link on the MPO website and I do have a handout and I'll leave you the extra copies if everybody wanted one. There is a QR code link in that handout, uh, directly to our online engagement website for folks and local residents. Uh, we'd feel comfortable to go in and anonymously promote their feedback to us as a consulting team. On where their concerns are, or their ideas for improvement. Where do they go and say, say going to school or work or using the bus or bike? Any other feedback they may have for us. And so you as of course selected officials, uh, please also weigh in. Uh, if you want to make a link to this on your website, just, uh, you're also welcome to keep that. And so then following up on the next slide. Uh, what's next? Uh, we need to do our equity analysis of what are the, uh, equity and social, uh, uh, impact considerations for our, our safety network? And what we're trying to recommend. We are currently mapping what we call our high injury network. Where are we seeing the most fatalities and serious injuries in the metro? And of course, continuing with our public engagement and public participation, because we want to hear, uh, from our residents, our community members. Uh, what's going on, what's important to them, what are their top priorities or concerns? And so with that, I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions or going into in greater detail. But I appreciate you just giving me this amount of time that I can do an update of what we're working on with the MPO.
Chris. One of the things, you know, I, I travel every month to Mason City for part of my work. And I'm astounded at the fact that I don't see Highway Patrol anywhere. They're just almost nonexistent. And, uh, the speeds that, that people are traveling are horrendous. Also, here in the metro, I've, I've just, I've noticed an increase in red light running. You know, I don't, I don't know where everybody's in a hurry to go, but, uh, apparently they can't be late. Are you hoping that this will lead, um, to some legislative changes?
That is a great question. Uh, the safe, uh, systems approach is multifaceted. And so there's more than one way. We look at physical, structural roadway improvements. Uh, changes to our roadway design or specific intersections to make them safer. Uh, but another option or another thing we look at, a tactic is changing driver behavior. And so things such as, you know, the hands pre-device requirement or, uh, changes on how we're able to, um, patrol our roads. Or automatic, uh, traffic enforcement through cameras. Those are all things that can be considered as kind of a systemic improvement. And then should, you know, state law changes, um, uh, be required, that's something that could also be looked at. We would hope this plan could be a good resource that we could then, if there's a state law change, uh, that can be used as kind of a backing for that. Uh, and it is a multiple approach. It's changing driver behavior, let's all put down our phones, let's all slow down. Uh, it's structural improvements to roadways. Uh, and in some cases, you know, this, it could be on how we even try to enforce our traffic. Uh, because I, I think that's not a secret at all. We all are generally driving faster on our roadways while more distracted. Uh, our cars are fancier, so it's not even just the police devices, it's our cars themselves, right? Uh, and so there's a lot of things involved and I too have seen a lot more of it by cameras. And I see a lot less, um, highway patrol on our interstates and I'm going to take it from my home now.
Well, you know, we, we were successful in doing a road diet to your, uh, here on University Avenue, which I, I hope has, uh, the police department not as busy on, uh, on that road as what they used to be. But, um, thank you, Chris. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. I, I do think if I can get out my little soapbox, we all, including myself, we all need to take this seriously. We need to change our own behaviors behind the wheel to make it safer. We need to respect the bikers and pedestrians on the streets as well as each other in the car.
How long are you collecting feedback for?
Uh, great question. So, uh, it is a multi-month process. And so this first, uh, phase, I would hope that we'd, uh, say get a good, uh, sampling of data from our website in the next month. Uh, we will then be in a little more planned drafting mode. Um, and so then in the, the following months after that, when we go out and plan draft, uh, we'll want additional feedback. And so, uh, we'll be back to see you, uh, a few more times just to unveil what we've come up with, hopefully get a little more, uh, feedback. And so, um, this initial input, another month, uh, but then, uh, this is a more than a year-long process.
While you're not in grant pitch rece- receiving mode, uh, it's a topic that I think is near and dear to our council. Because we were just in, um, DC advocating or, uh, talking to folks about, um, our grant applications for the Seventy-third Street multimodal connector. Which, uh, would add pedestrian access, because right now it's on the street or the railtra, uh, the railroads, um, including people that are, um, handicapped, using a wheelchair. On to oncoming traffic on Seventy-third Street. And through, um, Bolton and Mink, uh, I think the stats they gave us that we have the second busiest, um, on and off ramp in, um, the metro. And it's got a disproportionate high accident rate, um, because of the design of it. So, uh, I want to give you, these are two, uh, trading cards for our MVPs of our project.
Only you and, uh, United States senators and congresspeople have those, so I was.
My son has like this.
Okay.
And VIPs.
And, and other VIPs.
I am honored. I'm the producer of that roadway, although I'm not a pedestrian, because as you know, there's no pedestrian.
No pedestrians.
I'm excited you guys are making that such a priority.
So I have a, a couple of questions. Um, so I'm sure that the MPO, and you're familiar with, um, the work that the legislature did this last year to add, uh, bikes to protected, you know, being protected in the crosswalk. So that was exciting. So hopefully that makes a difference, a nice policy change to, to add to that. But, um, so, um, are you guys looking also at, I, I didn't feel like I got a clear, um, uh, answer to this. Are you looking at potential of crash, crash and injury as well as, uh, because in the beginning you said where a crash and injury happens? So, or the potential of, because I think, um, even like ours is, I don't know that we have a lot of great data for it. But the potential for it particularly on the pedestrian side is more significant, right?
Yeah.
Um, so I guess I'm just, I don't know if that's part of your thinking or not, but.
That's a great question. So the short answer is yes.
Okay.
Using, on one hand, we have to use existing data to, to paint the story of what's going on by the data. What are the actual crashes occurring? What are the injuries and the fatalities? Uh, but through the engagement process as well as, uh, interviewing, visiting, uh, various city staff. Uh, we're wanting to know where people are feeling unsafe and they're anticipating or feeling that this would be, uh, un, un, unsafe or potential issue. So that we can make sure that's in consideration as we're developing this, this greater plan and identifying some of those priority improvements.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Um, and then, so one of the, you, I wrote this note and then I think you got to it. But there, you know, have you guys looked at, do we know what the major causes of, um, like the increase in pedestrian deaths? Is it, is it speed? Is it running that red light? Um, I, I was going to say it's, yeah, it's, um, it, it's because people are on their devices. I mean, we know that, that's not a, um, a secret. It's something that the legislature has tried to tackle. Um, so kind of with, with that in mind, knowing that that's such a big key component of this, um, distracted driving. Um, are you helping, will you be able or making that case for that policy change?
So I wanted to be careful, because, um, uh, the focus of our plan isn't necessarily to try to change state law.
Mm-hmm.
But that could be an outcome.
Okay.
Our primary focus is on what are physical roadway improvements as well as trying to modify driver and user behavior, uh, to make our roads safer. But that could be an outshoot, uh, because you did ask the question, you know, why are we, why are we seeing increased pedestrian and bike fatalities and serious injuries? And it's really multifold, uh, so we do have just an increase in the number of bikers and pedestrians, which is something we all as cities have wanted to see. We make these pedestrian improvements, bike improvements, because we want that. Uh, but we're driving faster and we're distracted by it. So really, it's all three of those as kind of those primary factors.
Right.
I don't have how those percents are broken out, uh, but, but it's really kind of a multifaceted. So at the end of the day, uh, this will be a, um, a menu of things we're trying to accomplish and with multiple ways to achieve those goals.
Right. It makes the most, like, if you figure what's the problem, what's causing, you know, cause and effect, right? So these are your causes. What do you got to do to clean those up? And sometimes it's, it is policy change, right?
Yeah.
So any other communities in Iowa doing this project or only? The metro?
Yeah. So, uh, here's where it gets a little bit, uh, complicated. So just outside of the ring of, uh, the Des Moines MPO's kind of service territory is the Central Iowa Regional Transportation. Uh, something, something association. Um, so there is a, a ring just outside of the, you know, more all of Warren County and Dallas County and some of the little areas just outside. They're also going through this process at the same time. Um, uh, uh, other than that, and other major, uh, metro areas and other cities have completed this before. Des Moines actually did their own last year, uh, the year before. Uh, and then, you know, uh, various other communities, Indianapolis, others, under the, the umbrella of the, um, Vision Zero process. Which was really the, how do we get to zero fatalities and serious injuries? And so some other communities have already done this. And to be, um, quite honest about it, um, it takes commitment and it takes a lot of effort and it takes funding. To make this happen. We're, we're going to all have to work collectively. We have to take it seriously. It has to be a priority and we have to put our money where our mouth is.
So it's largely just happening kind of here in central Iowa, so not.
It, it's happening across the United States, but not every community's doing it.
No, I understand that. In Iowa.
In Iowa, it is central Iowa.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know, because I'm trying to figure out how do we help use this data potentially to address some of those policy change? So the last thing, um, and sorry for my hundred questions. Um, could you get us a, um, and, um, some sort of, um, article or a little square for our newsletter? And maybe social media, um, so that way we can post and get those out there. So we kept the message you want us to articulate?
Would love to. You bet.
So Adam doesn't have to create it?
Okay.
And we can put it in our newsletter or June newsletter in the next couple of weeks?
We would love to do that. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That was my last one. Thank you.
Have you thought about going back, going back to the basics? Uh, my daughter's twenty-three, but she went through driver's ed and she has video of her driver's education teacher sleeping in the front seat. So, and that happened multiple times. At first I was like, yeah, no, that didn't happen. And then the videos kept coming, so yes. And this was something that I heard, you know, from numerous students, not just this person, but others. Is there a way that we can, because I, I think part of it is if you don't teach them starting young about the defense, you know, defensive driving as well as distracted driving and what, you know, the problems that, that could occur. They don't maybe understand quite the, the level that they should. So is there a way that we can do something to kind of go back to, to where we teach them and start off so that they don't maybe start those bad habits? Um, hopefully they don't learn them from parents or loved ones or, you know, me. But, um, you know, just kind of thinking outside the box, just knowing how bad driver's ed was.
Something like that could be improved up that, changing how we drive, changing the driver as well, giving us to change our attitude. You know, what can we promote at the driver's ed level? But you know, I guess I took mine really seriously because I'm thinking about my driver's ed.
Oh. Dr. Frank is still has me scared to do multiple things wrong, because I am not kidding you. He was meaner than mean and would just scream and yell at you in the car. And it worked, because I remember all of these things and my husband is like, where did you learn that? That was back in like, a long time ago, but I still recall it.
I, I think one of the important part is, is our driver's educational, uh, program, the curriculum, whatever that is, however that's established. Do we have everything in there? In fact, to make sure we're covering the latest in state law related, related to stopping in crosswalks. That's one violation. Now if you see red, uh, people running stop signs or running red lights or very red yellow lights. Um, I even see a lot of people that have been standing right there and they don't stop at the crosswalk. It's the law. And now it's also for bicycles. So I, I think all of that is an important component while looking at this. How do we make our eyes as drivers? And I think it's a message we can each take back in our own lives. Uh, you're making me think of Vanessa as a parent, you know, that I need to follow that behavior as a driver as well. Anything else for me?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris.
Appreciate it.
Now you tell everybody Windsor Heights was the best.
We had the most questions and the most interaction.
And you got the most souvenirs.
I think what else has given me anything?
We are known for our good souvenirs. That is one thing we are known for.
Actually brought my name, because, uh, because I got, uh, we're besties now after driving forty-foot buses together, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Public forum, this is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to know more than five minutes. Public, that'd be you, Barry.
I'll pass.
All right. Consent agenda, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Season series.
Yes.
Just jump.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, six A, consideration of sister cities, Windsor Heights representatives request for reimbursement for twenty-twenty-four Kofu Japan delegation trip.
Was there a rec, there wasn't a recommendation?
Yeah, there wasn't a recommendation.
Specific amount.
Specific amount. The, um, agenda item is, I think, hopefully pretty thorough, as was the one last year. If, uh, council would, uh, I invited Ricky to attend. She's not here.
Do we know, what, is there a specific, I can't remember now. I, I know I read it and I came up with a dollar amount, but was she asking for a specific dollar amount? She wasn't.
No.
So I just looked at the numbers that Mike pulled from different sources and what have you, considering inflation and all of the things. It looks like the, the trip just with expenses of hotel and transportation, all those things are, is probably cost around four grand, if I had to guess. Um, so I was thinking, you know, if we can, I don't, I don't, Rochelle, did we, did, how much did we allocate? How much did we put towards this? Oh, we put thirty-eight hundred? Okay. I was, I said three thousand, but I'm open to whatever.
My paper, C S R T. How much are we as council members allotted through the year for all of our stuff? Is it like, wasn't it forty thousand budget or is that special events?
No, not special events.
Twenty thousand.
Is your, is your.
And does that include mayor? Does that include? No. Yeah. Okay.
I mean, it's an international trip. There's just a lot more expenses and she's going to have out-of-pocket expenses and so.
Think we should just max whatever we budgeted for.
All right. Up to thirty-eight hundred. All right. You want to change your motion?
Oh, I just motioned for us to discuss it. So just.
Well, I just motioned for us to discuss it, so didn't have a specific.
Didn't have a number.
But I will now do that.
I put the, and I put the, the total like estimate was the thirty-five, the thirty-eight was from last year. Um, I know it was confusing because there's two.
Yeah.
There's two agenda items, last year's and this year's. This year uh, would be presumably cheaper. Um, but that was what, both two numbers, two very large numbers in there, so. But again, Rochelle, it is budgeted last year and this year, correct?
It's budgeted for FY twenty-four, so right now it's also budgeted for FY twenty-five.
So I move, we, we approve up to thirty-eight hundred dollars for expenses with receipts.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Sears?
Yes.
Russell Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Six B, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-four thirty-seven, um, awarding general obligation Urban Renewal Bond Series twenty twenty-four A.
I'll approve.
Uh, Rochelle? Or AJ or John?
It's been a hot minute since you've been here.
So it's great to see you guys. Thank you again. Um, hello, Mayor and Administrator of the line Council. Nice to see you. And you should have in front of you, your retaliation for this, who did sell two thousand twenty-four A bonds today. The original farm out was eight million, three hundred seventy thousand. We did reduce that a little bit from three million, uh, I'm sorry, to eight million, three hundred twenty-five thousand just to sort of stay within the parameters for the debt levy um, portion of the FY twenty-five. Most of this is being paid with it. There's just one little bit in twenty-five that is letting the rest of that is, is debated. You received three bids, the lowest coming from Northland Securities at a TIC of three point eight seven, eight percent. That's actually a little bit better than what we had used in the planning stages. We had estimated about four percent. Um, because the rates are lower, on a net basis, your debt is about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars less overall. I will say that's a net basis because you actually got a couple hundred thousand, two hundred forty thousand dollars more proceeds. So we didn't reduce the debt. You're actually going to um, leave that debt outstanding in the full amount. We didn't reduce it. You took those proceeds. Um, so there's a little bit of a difference there, but generally speaking, it's well within the expectations. The bonds were um, rated double H three from Moody's. That's the same rating that you had. They did cite a strong economic base and growing full value per capita as reasons for the strong rating. Um, they mentioned factors that could lead to an upgrade being more um, uh, growth in your fund balances and improved reporting. By that I mean Moody's recently has become agitated with the lack of cash. I'm sorry, the lack of approval audits. They've done this all over the state. There have been some cities that have actually gotten downgraded because they want to see audit based, or sorry, approval based audits as opposed to cash. So that's something that they noted here. Um, and then any declines in the fund balance significantly, or is there going to increase in your debt burden would lead to a downgrade potentially? But generally speaking, no change there. They pretty much only had positive things to say. Just a bit of an update. So once these bonds are outstanding, you will be at seventy-three percent of your capacity. Only until we're able to go down to sixty-eight percent. We've got a payment coming up on June one. And so, you know, you're managing your capacity well. And again, either primarily paid or debated with your tax increment. Uh, so really no impact of the debt levy there. And just um, by way of interest, because this is one of the last practical times to sell bonds and close this year. So there were several other cities in the market today with revenue bonds and uh, some of them were geo, some of them were taxable. There's a lot going on. But generally speaking, you're sort of right in line. I'd say the closest to you, uh, Waverly, Iowa sold bonds at a three sixty-six that have the same rating, but they were ten years shorter. So I would expect your bonds to have been higher and they were, but um, so just as you know, we were there and right around three point eight seven for you. Again, less than planned. So I would recommend that you reward to Northland and I answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Can you go back? You said seventy-three percent until June first and then what number did it go down to? Thank you.
And that number, those numbers are calculated without any consideration for future valuation growth. So as your valuation grows and you continue to pay that, those numbers will go down and then you might issue debt. So it's something that really got uh, to make sure that we're, you're within your parameters that staff and council is comfortable with.
Way to go Rochelle and getting us uh, in a good place. Fun audits.
Fair. Is there a motion?
Um, I think I already moved.
I think there is, yeah.
Is it for the Northland Securities?
It is now.
Is harms what you like to?
Just asking.
Sorry, Mayor.
It's all right.
Yes.
You're good to him, medicine.
Do I second?
Do I second?
Oh, okay. I'll take it.
Yeah, okay. Whatever you need.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Sears?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, six C, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-four thirty-five, a resolution awarding the twenty twenty-four televising project, HydroClean LLC. Uh, Justin or AJ?
Uh, I'll kick things off and then hand it over to you, Justin. Uh, we have fifty thousand dollars budgeted for uh, telescoping of Windsor Heights uh, pipes, primarily stormwater. Uh, earlier, well, I guess it was late last year, uh, we did notice a sinkhole um, just off of Seventy-third Street. And that kind of facilitated and started the conversation on the need to uh, do some televising, particularly along that Seventy-third Street corridor as we're upgrading the storm sewer pipes along Seventy-third. Um, all the streets to the west uh, drain into Seventy-third. Uh, those are primarily uh, pipes in people's backyards, uh, about ten-foot public utility easement and most of most of those streets, uh, backyard and there's a lot of trees, fences, uh, other plantings in there. They're hard to access. And so in our storm sewer uh, master plan from twenty eighteen, the goal is to eventually move all those storm sewer lines uh, into the right of way uh, and upgrade those pipes, uh, because we've had some known failures, but also probably uh, some additional failures out there that we're not aware of. So uh, we have a high need to, to do some of this televising, understand the conditions underground, particularly in that Seventy-third Street corridor. Uh, but uh, let Justin talk a little bit more about uh, how it was determined where um, we're going to prioritize the spending this year uh, and what we're all accomplished with that. So I think it includes Sixty-eighth Street and some other areas as well.
Right, uh, some of those televised is also down in the Colby Park area and, and Adam hit the nail on the head. It's really just to see what the condition there like the existing pipe are in. Um, more feasible to do more linear footage instead of piecemealing every time we get a complaint and have to go out and look and there's a pothole or not a pothole, but a sinkhole with a damaged pipe. There's a lot of the pipe in the backyards are either metal pipe that it's rusting away and eventually collapsing. So trying to get a economy of scale with this and um, and then with future projects, it's kind of lining up where we do it at. Um, we are doing sanitary sewer services on Sixty-eighth Street just to see if they are orange work pipe and, or not. And if they are, we'll put that in the Sixty-eighth Street construction package to, to have those replaced within the right of way.
So this is a, a bid for twenty-six thousand uh, dollars. Again, we do have fifty thousand budgeted, so it's likely we'll bring a change order to you in the future. Uh, once we've gotten through this and we see where some of the problematic areas are, um, may try to uh, take down some of the other areas in town that we suspect we have issues as well, so.
Do we think there was a misunderstanding in scope of work that since one is twice as much, do you think twice as much than the other one?
That's, that was my question.
Are they gonna come back for twice as much money because something changes?
Um, I don't think so. I think it's just timing and who is available because the stuff has to get done end of June. So it could be just one was freer than the other.
One wanted to do it, the other one didn't. Is that basically it? I mean?
Basically it, probably.
Happens sometimes.
Uh, out of curiosity, Justin, do you know who Urbendale uses?
Um, Urbendale, I believe, has a capability to do it themselves.
They actually have come and done.
Of course they do.
Some problematic areas for us in the past, but I think they do have uh, I don't know that their televising scope has the distance for some of the stuff that we want to do.
I was just wondering if um, any of our neighboring communities had used HydroClean because again, at half the cost, I, I like not paying as much, but want to make sure.
Recently hired a public works employee that used to work for HydroClean. Isn't that correct, Jason? I just started here. So they've got, we've got some experience with them as a company.
Well, I feel like, didn't they do ours the last time?
I thought they'd been doing.
Okay.
I think they have. I just can't remember off the top of my head. There's only a few companies that do it, so you don't get a whole lot.
I'm pretty sure they were our, our last contractor.
Twenty sixteen is the last one.
Probably.
Mm hmm.
I remember stupid stuff like that. So I'm, the, the only comment I was gonna have is, you know, what other areas do we potentially need to do considering we have the resource? You know, there are additional resources in this item, so you address that and I'm good. Thank you.
Any further uh, discussion or questions? Go ahead, Andy.
Okay, um, I, I think another area of town would be up there in Davison Heights. Um, Adam and I had, had kind of talked about that. So that might be something that we could add either via change order. Um, a section up there south of the new car wash being built. Um, kind of down and through where it all ties into Northwest and Washington at Sixty-eighth Street.
All right, roll call.
Susan Sears?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, six D, consideration of the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh four, uh, governing floodplain management. Uh, AJ, any changes?
Changes are public comments.
All right, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Sears?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Six E, consideration of the third reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh three, governing sidewalk regulations.
So moved.
Second.
AJ?
Uh, I think I did drop a couple of comments uh, under this ordinance reading. The, the letters have gone out. I think uh, Andy told me we referred back from two folks that have opted into the city's bid uh, thus far. So um, things are moving forward on this front and hopefully we'll get some of these sidewalks repaired yet uh, this summer and fall.
Okay. Questions, comments? Roll call.
Susan Sears?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Streets of Arms?
Yes.
Uh, reports, uh, finance committee met last week. I will have notes out to council before the end of the week. Uh, MPO Policy Committee met last week. There is approximately five million dollars uh, left in uh, climate reduction, uh, carbon reduction funding that, the money that didn't go to DART. And so there is a subcommittee um, put together as far as coming with a, with a process for applying uh, for that funding, what that looks like. Um, and so that potentially could be something that we could look for Seventy-third to Street to get funding for at some point. Um, so I will let council know what that process looks like whenever the subcommittee comes back with uh, what the parameters are for applying for it.
Mike, did you say you had a finance committee meeting? Was it economic development?
I'm sorry, economic development.
I can sure, I'm like, we have one coming up.
I have a lot of committee.
Nice.
Yeah, sorry. Economic development. Ms. Harms?
Um, Mac has meeting in June. We have a Personnel and Finance Committee coming. That's about enjoying our time in DC. All I got, friends.
Campbell?
Um, I attended the DART meeting on May seventh. Um, Joseph joined virtually. Um, I got a chance to speak to Windsor Heights Support of Reimagine DART to ensure we still have high-quality transit in the future. We know it's important for our businesses through here and that we're busy quarter. Um, there's so, hope I'm not stealing your thunder here, Joseph. Uh, there's gonna be surveys coming out for the uh, surveys uh, coming out for elected officials and our city administrator. Those will be coming soon and there's gonna be some focus group conversations as well. So keep an eye on your email and if you have questions, ask Joseph. Uh, thanks to everybody for uh, that took time away from their personal lives to go to DC to advocate for our city's needs and even bigger thanks to everyone who held down the fort here in Windsor Heights. Uh, I was, I was hoping there'd be more exciting stuff that happened, Adam, but uh, you. Oh, no, we did your best.
You, Adam.
And last week was the DART rodeo, uh, and uh, thank you to Amanda, Vicky and Louise and the training staff for an eye-opening experience driving a forty-foot bus. And I feel like I represented our city pretty well with my first place finish, so. And custom-designed t-shirts for everybody.
Excellent.
Deliving?
Yeah, it was a, uh, it was a real productive DMDC meeting. And uh, I, I think you know, once you get past the politics, um, it was, it was interesting. The, the most bipartisan member of the Iowa delegation seems to be our current Congressman Zach None. The findings were out earlier today. We had a economic development meeting that went very long. Uh, talked about uh, the new owner of that corner of sixty-five hundred university and what he may do there. Um, there was some comments about maybe building something fun. Uh, we had a long conversation about Landius map. Uh, historic homes along University Avenue was there. Uh, we talked about new ideas for Sherwood Forest. Um, let's see. I, there was a number of other issues, including what to do with the abandoned Sears building. And the updates that they've made there all of a sudden. So will we, will we move further on that? And I think the decision was, yes, we will. So I have.
So Jones, nothing for me? Sears?
Um, this is my doctor appointment, uh. Uh, I've had a fun time in DC with uh, everyone that came from Windsor Heights and I enjoyed meeting new people from the Des Moines area. We stayed very busy and uh, sure got our steps in, that's.
Oh boy.
Um, attended the Metro Waste meeting on the fifteenth. We had a special events meeting on Friday. I provided updates for all um, that we are working on for our events. Mayor Jones sent out a reminder email um, about Dinner Dispatch celebrating their five-year anniversary tomorrow um, from four thirty to six PM. Uh, I organized a connector, an Urbendale Connector event at the Metro Waste Authority for May thirtieth. Many don't know that uh, you can use the event space there at Metro Waste and in grime, in grimes. And you can also receive a nice tour of the facilities, including the robots that they're using. So that's kind of fun. Um, let's see, May thirty-first from five PM to seven PM, Touch a Truck with Matt Cale State Farm and Marco's Pizza sponsoring the event. I have the following confirmed, Mid-American, Metro Waste, Goldfish Swim School will bring their mascot of a goldfish. Um, custom concrete pumping, Public Works, uh, Police Department, Fire Department. I'm still waiting to hear back from Hanafin Towing, Pope County Sheriff's Office, KCCI Meteorology Group and the National Guard. We're always um, looking to have volunteers help us at these events because there seems to be a lot of kids running everywhere and sometimes it's nice to have some eyes and ears watching, so. Uh, a big Urbendale Chamber event is coming up on the twenty-third of May, the Central Iowa Business Conference. If you're interested, I'm sure Tiffany will find a way to sell you a ticket or two. And then uh, June seventh is our second movie in the park. Uh, the movie we're showing is Elemental. And we're still looking for some extra volunteers to hand out goodies at the start of the movie. Uh, the goodies pass out starts at eight fifteen, movie starts at eight forty-five. And volunteers are needed about seven thirty to help bag up the popcorn. That's it.
Just a couple of updates. Uh, the Windsor will be in front of planning and zoning Wednesday. Um, they've been working on a lot of site plan revisions, particularly on stormwater items. Uh, so most of those are now wrapped up and it's ready to go in front of them, so. Uh, it'll proceed, presumably you have a recommendation from P and Z uh, to city council at the next agenda, next meeting. Um, there's some scary potential weather on the uh, the radar for tomorrow, so be weather aware. Uh, we'll have our public works team and others prepared for anything uh, Mother Nature might throw at us. Uh, Knights in the Heights, we met with a couple of representatives uh, of the foundation this morning. Uh, the fence, the fencing is now up around the food truck area. Uh, so we have a general game plan uh, of how to position their food trucks uh, and their beer truck for the first two nights in the uh, and their beer truck for the first two nights in the heights. The first two at least we anticipate will be impacted. Uh, thanks to Lieutenant Norris as well for reaching out to the Walmart manager. Uh, they're going to allow folks to park on the kind of western side of their parking lot for the first two nights in the heights. So we'll keep the gates shut, but people can park in Walmart and then walk down, um, without fear of getting towed. So up some social media messaging and some physical signs, hopefully out there to help steer people in the right spot. Um, other than that, uh, just as a follow up, Janet was here, uh, at the last city council meeting, expressed some concern about 70th. I, I've walked 70th a few times at Del Matre there. Uh, haven't seen a lot of pedestrian traffic. Seems like things have called that, calmed down on 70th a little bit, um, from what I've seen. I tried to take that in my commute in the morning, but just welcome any other feedback from those that live in that neck of the woods and have any experience there, whether you're seeing it, uh, work fairly well, or if we need any additional attention or, or enforcement, uh, out there. So.
Seen a lot of 63rd Street. I think most of the people that were avoiding 73rd found 63rd Street. But one thing I did notice and I should have mentioned, um, Metro Waste picked up garbage today at like 2:30 in the afternoon, which normally it's about eight o'clock in the morning during the commute. And the commute has gotten, um, a little more dense recently. And so I don't know if that was an accident or if that was intentional. But if you could pass on that, uh, feedback season, it was, um, it was nice to have one less thing to compete with pulling out of the driveway this morning.
I know that when it used to be on Friday, and this was when Diana was still mayor. Uh, I made a comment to her that said, you know, they're picking up trash at 7:30 in the morning. It is a train wreck out there on 63rd. At that time, uh, the traffic has just backed up and Metro Waste was great about kind of changing that routine around. So I don't know if, I'll send an email just to see if we could keep this nice routine and make it. I, I will say that on 70th street, I take 70th, use Del Matro and Colby a lot as I travel. And I've noticed a reduction in traffic and I also have noticed a reduction of the speed on Willshire. But there's also been police officers that have been, uh, routinely, they have been very visible. Let's put it that way. So I think that that's also been a deterrent for speed through the, through 70th.
Anything else?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
We have fielded calls from citizens that have said a uh, a year old was coming with the construction on 73rd, but they've been very appreciative, uh,
That's awesome. Look, adjourn.
Uh, 22, uh, registrations for the citywide garage sale. So.
And that's this. It's June. We're, we're a month, like for some reason Metro Waste has us, it's usually May, like the first or second weekend.
June 7th or is it June?
Well, that's.
The June, like that weekend of June 7th, 8th, I think.
Okay.
Spring cleanup is June 15th and garage sales the 8th. And I think that was because we wanted to move back spring cleanup a little bit. So that was a little bit deeper into spring. So I think the garage sale is just the week before that.
It throws people off though. I mean, I have fielded so many questions about spring cleanup because everybody likes their routine of May. But so.
We want it to be warmer. That's why we did it, right?
I completely agree. I mean, and it gives me an extra month. There's no complaints.
Uh, Ms. Harms made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Roll call.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Jason, I'm going to hop over to the.